Good evening and welcome to the Citrus Planning Board being held here Thursday, November fourteenth. This is a public hearing room here in Town Hall. The general public is welcome for casualties and all that kind of stuff. Do you want to remind my board that our next meeting is eleven twenty-one and it is at the safety complex? Oh, good thanks, I'm not sure I forget that. Out of the board that we know of, okay? And that is your first meeting, there's no, nothing's changed or anything. We have to be there, we have to be there. At six thirty, we have a public hearing, excuse me, oh, excuse me, we have a post new agenda, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
It's GGS, I know, whatever.
The public hearing assesses to all the special permit through Macho Ave.
I need to read something, don't I?
No.
Do not.
Hold on.
I forgot, I forgot.
Wait, what? Wait, go ahead. Yes. Well, very. In accordance with National laws. Chapter forty-eight, section nine and eleven, and with Citrus zoning by law, section five thirty accessory dwelling special permit, and section nine forty referrals, the planning board will conduct a public hearing at six thirty P M. On Thursday, November fourteen, twenty twenty-two, order in a select door and hearing room at Citrus Town Hall, six hundred Chief Justice Washington Highway, Citrus, Mass. The subject of the hearing is an application submitted by applicant owner Steven and Elizabeth Tripp for accessory dwelling special permit for detached accessory dwelling to be located in a new structure to the west of the existing single family home at property located at thirty Marshall Field Ave, Citrus, Mass. Property insured on accessories map, parcel seven seventy-two dash two dash one. Plans are available to review in the planning board office, Town Hall, six hundred Chief Justice Washington Highway, Citrus. During normal business hours, butters and other interested parties are invited to attend this meeting. Right here.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
Could you put your state and your name and your address, please?
Steven Tripp. My primary address is thirty, well, at Hummerock, thirty Marshall Avenue, Hummerock. But we also live in Connecticut, which is thirty-eight Lock Tree Drive, Windsor, Connecticut.
Can you put state your business brief on the board, please?
Yes, please, we're hoping for your consideration with regard to accessory dwelling that we hope to build on our property at thirty Marshall Field Avenue. My wife, Betsy, and I purchased the home back in nineteen eighty-five, and it's been a labor of love for that time. We're just now reaching that age when we began to plan our retirement years, and we feel that this would best suit our financial and lifestyle needs. So your consideration for this request would be much appreciated.
There are any plans you can go across to, okay? You've got the whole package.
Okay.
Got the one.
Oh, I mean, everyone had got a hard copy of the package.
Which I didn't.
So they not get the hard copies?
Nope.
I was not.
That is standing.
They're in the box, they're in the box.
Hold on. Hold on. We have a new post, so we, you can just submit them, so it's fine.
I'll keep going.
Sure. Until we get to place in part of us.
Sure, so we obviously, after much research and consideration, we looked at options such as adding lot to the home. We looked at a lift some time after the twenty eighteen FEMA funded lift of the house. So again, we went through a gamut of options and the financial impact that it would have on us as we were moving into retirement. And what we came up with is we should make best use of the property that we own in Hummerock. We have an extra large lot, a relatively small house comparative to others in the neighborhood. So we felt that if we could build the right type of structure, that we would be able to extend our time there to include pretty much the whole of here. Whereas probably the better part of our thirty-nine years of ownership, the house was really a summer cottage, plum for a summer cottage, and typical had to rain it every season. But we've been investing in getting the plumbing and making the house more of a year-round position. We also have a growing family, we have three beautiful daughters, we're all grown up, but we've also had two son-in-laws and two grandchildren. So we've gone from a modest group of five of us to nine in a short period of time. As you'll see from the original specifications, our home there is roughly sixteen hundred and fifty square feet. So it can get a little bit tight this weekend. That would be another, obviously, value to us to have that additional space available during the busy, you know, summer season. The vendor that we are working with on the design is a company called Habitat, Post and Beam. They're based out of Deerfield, Massachusetts. We chose this direction because it really aligns with the historic value of that neighborhood. I'm not sure you all know, but at one point, there was a hotel right there off of Marshall that happened. It's a nineteen oh five build on our current house, so we want to make sure we don't put a box in there or a trailer, but we want to put something that will add to the neighborhood value. I have that for anybody who would look at that a lot.
Are you saying it's pre-cut, though?
No, 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 it's a, it's a Post and Beam technology where they'll actually do all the pre-cutting of the primary beam and structure back at factory in Deerfield, and then they come to our site, the thirty Marshall that, to sell. Obviously, we'd have to have a foundation and all the infrastructure complete that, but that's the general plan right now. Really eliminate any significant interruption, because we are right on the right of way.
Right, yes.
Right, exactly, so we understand the foot traffic associated with that, so we're trying to mitigate any type of disruption to, to the area with that choice.
So you know that this was, have you applied for conservation yet?
Yes, we did, my, my firm of land planning submitted the complete documentation to JET's team, we can have.
Did you know when that here, who scheduled for it?
I, I heard the.
December sixteen.
Yeah, so much. We are also actively engaged with the board of health on the proper septic upgrade for the property. The current house has a defined cesspool, which we know would not meet title requirement if that were called for in the future. So as part of this project, we're looking to bring septic up to a title requirement. So we have two designs right now that are being evaluated by Joe, Board of Health.
Well, this was a public hearing, so it must post it, and we did get a lot of comments, and I'm going to read all of these comments in public record.
Sure.
So the water division wrote to us about October sixteen, the Cesspool A D U, which is your accessory dwelling, requires a separate water service according to D P G L N specs with approval and inspections by the water department, and actually, indoor fees will apply. The sewage measure wrote on October eighth, that there is no tub, so we need to make sure the septic system can be handled with increased loading. And so we will see the Board of Health, Septic System Regulations. Conservation implied to us on October eighth, that the project will need an order of conditions and new performance standard for dune since it is on a barrier beach and the land is subject to coastal storm loads. The structure in the dune needs open pylons without footings and open under structure, so movement of sediment and water is not impeded. Then wrote to us again on the twenty-third, the project including new structures and shed and shadow shed would need an order of conditions, immune performance standards for the dunes since it's on a barrier beach and the land is subject to coastal storm loads. The site is in a hanging in a velocity zone. The structure in the dune needs open pylons without footings and open under beam. This includes the shed and the shower, and the enhancement of the dune is encouraged. The Board of Health wrote on October eight that we need to see the A D U on the septic permit. There is a concern about fitting as the septic is proposed for six bedrooms, a rose garden already has been removed, and the neighbors have been to the Board of Health, and the Board of Health postponed those comments onto us and submitted to the design for septic foyer. So we see the A D U and those return to comments. The Board of Health wrote again on ten ten, very busy here. If parking is over the reserved septic area, it needs to be vehicle rated and needs conservation approval. The second comment indicates that the property is in a velocity zone, and a building cannot be added or blow to property increased citation from Title Five. It indicates we'll, we will not need Title Five regulations right now. A man by the name of Mr. Brian Raphael wrote to us on the thirtieth, that he was a considerable unauthorized removal of bush roses, and a concern related to the relocation of the shed and an accessory dwelling as the owner left that detail out in conversation and questions to variety of submissions. And he opposes your request. A person by the name of Nick Wester wrote to us on November sixth, and has a concern with the parking, the impact of structural rentals. They say it is immune system with zoning intent and environmental model following concerns. The Board of Health wrote to us again on the second of November. It tells us that the current culture is in a velocity zone, and why can't you decommission a bedroom in a primary dwelling? The owner said that he would decommission a bedroom. Also, your engineer raised issues that there is no setback to the reserve area required, and the inspection board moving blue, so it is accessible as the septic system is under the accessory dwelling unit. You told us on the eleventh or the tenth of November that you want decommissioning a bedroom to make it a five-bedroom system.
That's correct.
We got a comment from a Ms. Hummerow, asked us to consider your long-term community activity. I can tell you, Dr. Dispet, we did not initially take that into consideration. That's not enough, her. And we had a request for a concern from Mr. Vazza, and he is concerned with the primary residence, parking and driveway, flight control issues, environmental impact, groundwater and water quality impacts. That's a lot of discussion, I want to, I need a little help. Karen, nobody picked ours.
Well, so if you, you know, we sent out the materials so that you can look at the stuff.
Yep.
They're using the average setback method to determine the front setback of the house. So that's why in one of the comments, somebody's saying it's not very easy to be using the average setback method. And it's on, it's on one of the plans. Bob, the building commissioner, looked at the average setback and thought it looked correct. The reserved septic area, that's where they closed parking over, that's harmless parking for our primary accessory is going, so all the structures underneath that needs to be H twenty-one. Title Five, they are decommissioning one bedroom in primary dwellings, so it'll be a five-bedroom septic system. The Board of Health believes they're not allowed to upgrade, so they can't have six bedrooms, but they can replace and have a five-bedroom septic system. So whatever the Board of Health, they usually make them sign deed restrictions, et cetera, on decommissioning a bedroom. And the septic system for the primary, for this is under, it's under the accessory dwelling.
Underneath.
Underneath, so it'll have all the stuff that's going to have to be serviced, will have to be outside of, will have to be accessible.
Let me explain that element, Karen, I couldn't interrupt, this is important to the discussion. The original septic plan was to the south of the structure. So if you look at the area of the map where they had the reserve, that has been for ninety percent of our conversation, a location of future septic system property. When we designed the structure, as you can see from our drawings, we were asking for a nominal elevation above grade, something that would be close to matching the existing house, roughly three and a half feet above grade. Our engineer pointed out a problem, and that was that that grade elevation over the reserved septic would not work. So rather than raise the house on stilts on Marshall that, which I think would be completely out of bad taste, especially if it's not skirted, we decided to switch the septic systems so that the new leaching field would then be under the house, and we would be able to, again, install the house at three and a half feet above grade, knowing that the septic system was already in place. Does that make sense?
I guess so.
It, it, it was an evolution, and certainly Department of Health have been very patient with us, had we made that change, but it was something that got discovered in the process of the final design. I'm sorry, Karen.
No, that's all right.
I just want to make sure that was understood as to how we, how we came to that decision.
I mean, our plans don't have anything about elevations on, so it's very confusing of how, you know, of what it's actually being, how high, except, you know, the first floor is in relationship to the septic system.
Also, I can't help from this, but these look like these are somehow blocked up as opposed to being free as the water comes.
That's just a design application, and then obviously leaving those skirted, that's not, that's not part of our plan. That's just a design element by the craft cars.
Well, you have, you have a recording, it's for us to know what's inside.
Yes, that's what I, I totally understand, there'll be detailed drawings that'll be appropriate to follow. Just wanted to try and get through this evolution into getting approval before we spend any additional money for the design.
I plus you do that without the elevations.
The elevation, I have an elevation certificate in your packet.
Anything else?
It's noted in there.
That's meaningless to us, I mean, we, we, we like to know how the elevation would be going on the site.
Yep.
An elevation certificate can point to the building department.
Not yours.
All right, I understand that now, I'll work to resolve that question.
I have a question now, how many bedrooms does the current house?
How many is five?
So you're going to take one, so it's going to stay in the new septic system?
Yes, that's correct.
Stay on the second floor?
No, it's one on the first floor and four on the second floor. I, I have been told by my, my vendor, just walk about construction, that by moving to a five-bedroom configuration, we're not required to have a reserved septic. That's new information, and I have to go back to them, you know, and ask them what that means for this process going forward. And I need to verify that with the Board of Health, that that fact is the case, and we do not need these re-sequenced, they load a five bedroom.
Mr. Tripp, you are aware that our current bylaw requires you to live in one of your fellow's year round?
Yes, and I've signed this sworn document stating that is our amendment.
So whether perfectly clear.
Absolutely, this, this, this is, we're doing this for us. We've waited thirty-nine years to enjoy Hummerock. My first experience was in nineteen sixty-eight, and fishing and living off of the North and South River. I want to bring that to my children and grandchildren, we just have not been able to make it happen financially. We hope that this will allow us that to happen.
And then you lost your bathroom? Will they need to install water or not cover up that much?
That would be conservation, I'll just let you guess, then you can ask for attention. If there's an increase in perus area by twenty-five percent, yes, that would be strong. That's, that would be conservation.
Are you going to put a generator in or?
No plans at this point. That's a small electric system that will be in the attic, will be elevated, obviously, the attic won't have the systems to support the accessory dwelling.
So the attic cannot support habitable area?
Right, we also have a second sworn document to that, to that position in your back. We will not occupy that, this is for storage, we've gained a lot of things over sixty-five years, we need storage.
Oh, Josh, sir. Yeah, I went to Josh's workshop. Maybe you also have that knowledge, Steve.
A lot of comments here, I'm not sure they're of interest.
Yeah.
But why, why would you put the septic system underneath the house?
Well, that's to explain, we're faced with a choice.
No, I know, you, you're not going to get access to it, you need to do it in pink.
Well, it's leaching field.
Well, it's got elevation box and everything.
Again, and I spoke with Joan today about what elevation would allow for that maintenance. Based upon the new information we have, with the five-bedroom configuration, we might switch it back to the other septic plan, which gives us more than enough room in this leak, though we nothing above it, which is on your plan listed as, as secondary leaching field would become a primary again. We have some work to do with the Health Department to get this correct, we're going to focus on that.
Something to say, and that would be a better option?
I do, I do too, I agree with you, it's, it's less disruptive and certainly, I mean, it's short-term, we're having problems with the outflow from the house, and I have to decide whether to repair that outflow pipe or move ahead with the septic system. And I would certainly hope that I could move ahead with the septic system to get that taken care of.
I don't know, we had, we had a lot of comments.
There may be more comments.
Had you read, unless we've gotten, that we've gotten through those, or answers to those, so.
I'm going to be frank, my budding neighbor to the boss is going to lose some of his view of the ocean. He has a neighbor, that's good friend, that wrote the letter about the Rosa Regosa, never spoke to the gentleman, and suddenly we're having a chatty conversation. I didn't realize it was checking up on him. Neighbor that's to the west of that primary, again, another friend of our budding neighbor, wrote it out of courtesy. I think most of his letter refers to the detriment of short-term rental, which is not what we're having in conversation up here today. And that's fine, there is no parking issue. We have a twelve thousand square foot lot, we have plenty of room to park cars behind the property.
Where are they not? Where are they going to park?
If you look at the location where the proposed reserve is, that old area, it's roughly six hundred square feet. We only need one car per bedroom, so that's four cars for that primary house, and the accessory dwelling will have one car, so five cars, and we could probably put five more there if we chose to.
Think we didn't see that on, on plans.
I, I can tell you that I, I wrote by your call today, and I, and I would say, I would, I'd press the thing, the parking without the issue there. Because it's all jet parking. But, and who would she, I think we also, you know, say right now?
No, I just think we should, we should be pretty solid, question just.
So, yeah. Flood plane special permit is not required?
No, it's not in this town, Citrus flood.
It's what?
It's not in the town, Citrus flood, like, the town, Citrus flood plane is the H R.
Wow.
And it's.
Wow.
It's, it's, I double-checked that.
That just doesn't pass the state's test.
I agree, but that, that's what it is, this is, this has been the same way since nineteen seventy-two.
Okay. I think that we need more information, but what we're doing here, how we better do it. And because I can't, I need more information, and the comments need to be better pressed, septic system needs to be dealt with, we've got the highest risk use, where are we going to put it? And the parking issues, is that right? So.
My only question would be, and I didn't, to be honest, I was trying to go back to the A D U, the revised bylaws, but the ratio of accessory dwelling to.
We're still under the.
We're under the new, we're under the existing bylaws.
We're under the existing bylaws.
So does that, does it fall within the allowable?
Yeah, he's having seven hundred forty-two square feet of living area. I mean, that, that house looks bigger, and it is bigger, because it is over a thousand gross square feet.
Right.
But if you take down the definition of gross square feet, it doesn't include the attic, because it's not.
It's not that at all, yeah.
And will it look compared to the existing house? And I, I had no idea, because I'm just seeing, there's a piece of paper.
Right.
Is this going to look fairly supported, like you guys have looked at the house?
Yeah, it's a big house.
I took some pictures.
Okay.
I, I mean, it's a big house. Well, anybody else has to read that. I also have some near, by the amount.
I'd like to, no, I'd like to see that piece. This is, this is in there.
This?
For your real house.
Where's the accessory dwelling?
Accessory dwelling is going away from here, this is primary dwelling, this is accessory dwelling, showering has entered into it, and a shed.
Shed.
Is that on the map?
It's on the side.
Yeah, we're in touch, yeah. On this picture, where's it going on this picture?
I'm lying into Marshall lab.
It's right, it's right in here, so the accessory dwelling is going to be in here, the shower, and the shed, main, which is wrong.
Wow. It was.
There were a lot of questions raised, and whether or not we were respectful of the managing flood zones. This is a nineteen eighty-five picture from the yard, across seawall to the ocean.
Yeah, let them digest those pictures first.
Yeah.
I mean, so let them digest those pictures for then. Want to introduce something, I will use coffee for the record, though.
This, this picture here is what these two plows come on the parking.
What, I'm struggling here, can I see?
So you have one access way in for five, six, eight, nine cars. That's what consults with us, Board of Health and safety.
I understand, I, I think that if you were to inventory the average property on Hummerock, I would say we're on the upper nine percentile as far as parking space. And I guess you just have to see it in a, in a given weekend to understand it's more than enough space in park coaster cars.
But also, the parking spots have to be like official parking spots, it's not like I just have a lot of grass that I park.
Yeah, we're going to do a shell.
My kids park their cars on the grass.
It'll be a shell driveway, previous, crush shell driveway, it'll be clearly designated where the parking is for, for folks that are there for rent.
That's what we want to see on the ground, that's what we want to see on the ground.
It's never been labeled as crush, as crush shells before.
Looks like these are.
Yeah, that was the original ground wave, we just would have to push it up.
You know, I want to see an actual rendition of the house, the accessory, whatever you want to call it, in relationship to the existing house.
Correct.
I want elevations, I want to know how high the roof is, how wide it is, I want it in real time. Okay, and I think you need to get the Board of Health, where are we? You need the conservation of the sixteen, there are some unanswered questions here. And you know what, my, my biggest concern is, and I saw Mr. Bass's pictures that would go back to. and I saw Mr. Bass's pictures that would go back to a number of years. Or water that goes around your house is just absolutely.
That was March of twenty eighteen. It was a significant story.
Okay, but you know what? We're gonna have a lot more.
It does all the time.
Now, this doesn't happen all the time. And I know I can do nothing about it. As long as everything is met the way it should be, I just find, you know, a real problem with putting people at risk. I really do.
In the al- almost forty years we've all had, had the issue twice.
Okay, but it is changed.
I agree.
And it is changing. And it's not changing for the better. It really isn't.
So I think this, if you see the fence he's put in, he's constantly putting building things to try to mitigate that, that problem. Everyone they walk, politely, just want people to walk by and think, what are you doing? It's this big, big, big square.
We've done everything we can to remediate the problem. I'm a active member of the coastal advisory commission. I understand it. But I also know it's my choice, as long as I can build it within the FEMA standards, to create a safe living space. That's what I am seeking from this commission. As it relates to what's gonna happen in thirty years, we're all gonna be having to worry about that because I'm not gonna be here worried.
Well, neither will I. But the point of the matter is, it's about right now. It's about today.
I understand.
It's about today. And you do have short-term rentals in the big house through the summer, which now.
So for part of the summer, yeah, not the whole summer, but yes.
Our, our first tenant that we had, Jack, in nineteen eighty-five, still comes back every year.
It's very difficult to turn away nine hundred dollars a day when you wanna fix it now. And that's what we're seeking to do, to have some portion of that revenue stream to help us retire. That's the simple.
Mr. Tripp again, and I understand what you're trying to say, but we do try to keep that kind of stuff away, um, just.
I understand, but it's a matter of.
But wait a minute, wait a minute. You are going to condition
Yeah.
that it cannot be used, the new accessory dwelling cannot be used as a short-term rental. You are going to condition.
That, yes.
And that's the way it is.
I wouldn't, wouldn't be assured that it's gonna be occupied.
Yeah, that's correct. Which you're going to cover. So you're gonna cover yourself by, because you're also putting that in from every accessory dwelling here on that.
We're going by the rules. This is a legal by-the-book accessory dwelling application. Please, we know there are many more apartments that have been built over the ranges. They're being used for short-term rental everywhere in this city, including Hummer Rock.
But we are concerned with this one.
Right, but we're trying to do it the right way.
This one, and this is the one that we invest, all we can deal with at this time. And I, I would down here, but we need to, we're not, to you this.
Well, we're not, we're not ready for it yet. So I said, everybody look at the pictures I gave. You haven't, you collect them at the end, right?
Yeah.
So now Mr. Tripp wants to, um, show his pictures before he takes public notice.
That's a little bit silly. Mr. Tripp, he wants the pictures.
He's true. Apologize for the quality of images. They were screenshots from a video. So, um, clearly, the top images represent what we had in nineteen eighty-five, not long after we purchased the house. If you look down into, in the depression, at the bottom, you see the Rosa that we developed in the front of the house. And on the last page, you see a retention fence. You see a retention fence that I took from a beach, excuse me, that I took the idea from a beach down at Sandwich here that we built. And we built that after the said storm that Mr. Raza took pictures of. Because I know that a resilience fence like that would help build material in front of the house. I am the only beach owner along Hummer Rock Beach that's taken the initiative to build this type of fence. And it's not done yet. I can keep on going. But you see the effect of properly managing that. We also haven't hired people to groom the beach, which we've had as a rampant problem along Hummer Rock. Because I want to leave the natural barrier that's been created by the COVID. So I, I take offense to whether or not we've done our job to protect Hummer Rock Beach. I am committed to it.
That was not implied in any way, shape.
We will do our very best to provide the graphics you need to better visualize this project. But, um, I don't know what else to say. I, I say, at the, the end of the day, we'll, we'll meet your requirements.
See, that was the water was coming, right? We know that. The water was coming. Do you have anything else on the board that anybody wants to address?
I guess my question is clear. Modification to the information we need next time.
Yes.
So that we don't, we don't.
Yes, we do need beneficials to determine whether or not, what, what I say can be validated. And I agree with you.
So should we go through again? Yes, you know, yeah, you know, too. Parking, right, elevations.
Yeah.
If you have a plot line that shows everything in what it's going to be, not that it might be the square.
Right.
So parking needs to be laid out, septic system needs to be loaded, elevations, we need no elevations, property and where, how, how possible city. Just, I think it's just for monsters. I heard a lot of what you said. But I don't know that we got it on these papers that shows us what that is. Because that, the other day, that's what we were proving.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna open this up to the public. Thank you to everybody online. What's to say something?
I do not yet have anyone who should.
Anybody, any. Anybody?
Ms. Lambert, real quick, I'm not sure what happened there. You got muted. If we can just, um, unmute you. Do you see that there? Uh, Ms. Baxter, are you there? Can you just, uh, click that button on the screen? Does it say ask to unmute? It's touching.
Thank you.
That's perfect. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Bazza.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for your opportunity to address this meeting. My name is Richard Bazza. We own a property located twenty-two Marchville Ave., which is directly adjacent to property of Stephen who vets it through. I'm also at the beach opening at Old Flottos. Um, my family and I have lived in our home the last thirteen years. We live there year-round. It is our primary residence. And I would like to point out that we've always maintained a relationship with the house. However, I am here tonight to formally express our opposition to their application. As a little background on myself, I've been in the real estate development business for thirty-seven years. During this time, I have developed thousands of apartments, condominiums, and secondary homes. And the only reason I bring this up is because in almost every case, thirty-seven years, and numerous residential developments, the first thing that I wrote was to, is try to discuss my plans with the neighbors of ours. And in this case, Stephen did come over and asked if he could speak with me. We had a cordial conversation. He informed me that he had a cloud plan for the board of health to increase the septic field, that it's having septic issues. But also, I was aware of that. Uh, during the conversation, he advised me, they might have to move a gas main that's between our two homes, running up the driveway. I have to still have a picture of it. And that it might have to reconnect it out of my bathroom at Broadway. And I might actually have to pay to read the backside. Said, I don't know what's going on, but I'm gonna figure out what you did on the big talk and stuff like that. But that was it. No mention of accessory unit, no other plan, nothing. And I have to be honest, I was very, very surprised to receive the notice of this hearing tonight. Somehow, Steve must have forgotten to discuss it and he already filed a plan for accessory unit. So I have to say, I'm really concerned about lack of transparency leading me to tell any of the statements in their application that they submitted to the legal side. Uh, while we understand accessory dwellings make them a fit home in certain situations, I believe the project creates serious security concerns. Should have gone last. Uh, you know, we have filed, and I think you just referenced some of the more detailed opposition of the planning board. And I would like the opportunity to highlight several key points while I can here through A C. Uh, first, and I know they touched on this, is the red main residence. I'd like to address the issue with Tripp's residence stats. According to the accessory dwelling bylaw that you have for you, the purpose of these dwellings is to allow homeowners, who can no longer physically or financially maintain their residence, to remain in their homes. It says remain in their homes. Emphasis add about that. The trips do not use their property as their main residence, and they never lived in the home. For thirteen years that I've lived in the house, about a year round, their house has been boarded up every single winter. They only use the property themselves and with their children for short stays, spring and fall. For the remainder of this year, they rent it out. There's a summer weekly rent, local trip on gas, parties, hotel, significant noise disruption. But they actually go there all summer because they come here every year. But, you know, cars coming in and out and all that, and trash barrels all over the place. And I quite honestly, I've never been one to, you know, just not that type of person. But something goes on every single summer. And, and, and so the purpose is not to have someone just move into a dwelling, but then you have a, a, a summer hotel there to spread, that, that, that's not the purpose. It's, it's so that people can stay within their homes and their family, maybe their elderly, and then move into accessory unit. The bylaw is explicit, this aims to protect the values, this stability and the character of single-family residential area. I understand, so developing an accessory unit so that you can continue to rent out short-term rentals for your entire house is just not a precedent that you could set at the time. And I think that's what will be. Uh, second, I know before the zoning board, I think there are some zoning issues. I know they talked about a setback from the street. This required thirty yards. We have a house at sixteen foot three. My house and two adjacent neighbors, it's, our setback is twenty point seven feet. I mean, the only reason I think it's down to whatever it was, eleven or so, because of a voyage restaurant, just basically sitting on the street. But the single-family homes are setback at least twenty feet. Uh, and I know we referenced the parking plan. I think it's on page twenty-five, the document that we have with you. The parking plan for accessory dwelling proposes, I think he said, he has two space tandem parking spaces within the same driveway on that plan. That driveway provides access to the main home. Shared access is problematic because the zoning bylaw mandates, some of the board said that, how parking spaces should be. They have to be unobstructed and have unimpeded access to the street. Well, this plan having two tandem parking spaces in the driveway is completely impeding access to the main home. Finally, as far as the zoning issues, the existing shed, it's, he wants to move, it's on his property. He's proposing to relocate that, I think it's on the last page of your application. He wants to put that where he hasn't, there's already another shed sitting there that's already, that's within the, uh, required set, minimum setbacks on the side of the grid. So where he wants to put it is within the setbacks. So it's going to be compliant with the zone. So those are some of the only issues that are, need to be addressed on the plan. But Steve had mentioned like a public view of my house. This isn't a public view, quite frankly. I, I think you've seen the pictures that I, I sent around and maybe it's nineteen, whatever it is, nineteen, uh, two thousand and eighteen. But I have very serious flooding control issues here. And I understand, um, you all understand, this is a high risk zone and the pictures clearly show that. Uh, but our property is located just feet, just feet from the boundary line on, on that driveway with the proposed house. And we have a full base, no, no, no one knows this. We have a full basin. It's really deep and all of our mechanical systems in it. So I do have a concern, and you can see the pictures. And now we're putting a build, uh, a, 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 a potash where the, where the driveway is basically gonna be between my house and his house. And that's all impervious area, the whole roof. So that water is gonna get displaced. There's no provision on the plans for it to donate away. So not only is the impervious, uh, roof gonna splice water, redirect it, but if they, if they put a structure, the everything right now, the water flows down from the beach, comes out of the driveway, it's gonna get blocked. And even if it's on piles, it's, that and all of, you know, and the impervious roofs and everything else, the water is just gonna take a different path. And I, I frankly, thought on it in my basement.
We don't, we don't.
And there's nothing on the plans to address anything like that. There's no regrading, there's no nothing. And we've been, and we've even had a conversation. So, uh, you know, I just saw these plans for the first, like, it's gotta be planned for the first time. So. So anyway, and, 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 and I know there was a lot of talk about the septic, septic, septic systems that the proposed septic, septic system for the accessory dwelling and the leachage field, those raise concerns. But according to the EPA, septic systems in the drain field should not be located in other structures like dwellings or driveways. These structures can impede the proper functioning of the septic, septic system by compacting the soil, blocking the flow, and disrupting the oxygen flow we get from the tamarisk. The proposed plan placed the main leachage field beneath the accessory dwelling. It needs to, it needs to have oxygen and sunlight. It's not supposed to be blocked. And even if it has an access hatch that just doesn't work. If he puts it over into the other place where there are a lot of cars parking around this floor, there's many times, there's fifteen cars there. You're compacting the soil and, and that just flushes it. Septic systems don't work. And it's gonna run into water, a lot of concerns. So given these concerns, uh, with flooding and, and all that, and with the impervious material, I know there's different issues for the board health and conservation. But, um, I just think that with all the, making further decisions, uh, these things have to be taken into consideration. I mean, that in your time.
So if, if everybody knows that this is only one more that has to give an approval. At least spring. But, like, at least year four.
Right, I mean, there, this, I think, all unnecessary permits have to be obtained prior to construction. So that's the board of health, um, the, the conservation commission, planning, and the building commissioner. Um, there has to be a whole building process as well. So I tried, did try to talk to Joan today and board of health, but my, my call has never returned. I tried to find out the exact status so I could give you an update tonight. Conservation is December sixteenth. As for the average setback, I believe that, you know, in all districts, no building needs to be setback by a squad further from the line of the street or way that we average distance from such line of the buildings on the same side. So it's four buildings were used, and so it's buildings, it's not residences. Uh, and the building commissioner did review it, but I will review the average setback with the building commissioner again, um, in the next few days. So it sounds like the board wants to continue the discussion. How soon do you think you can have the revised information, man?
Next week.
So there's a couple options for you. Obviously, we won't be hearing it next week. We have a meeting December fifth. We have a public hearing that night, but that's the only thing so far on the agenda. On the twelfth, we have zoning workshop. Um, and then we go into January. So.
Can't make it.
You can't what?
I could not be with them.
All right, so, um.
I don't find it January.
But what's the pleasure of the board? I mean, do you want to wait till after the first conservation commission public hearing?
Yes.
Yes. So then.
That's a big piece.
It's a very big, it's a very big piece. So then we could do it after the zoning public hearing on January ninth. I wish our schedule to be accepted.
So you want to share what we're looking for, Mr. Tripp?
Yes, I do. I'll be well prepared. I appreciate your patience with us. It's such new experience for us to see floor panels.
Look at all of the barn.
I am. I'm smarter today than I am yesterday.
So we need a motion for, um, the accessory, the public hearing for the accessory dwelling special permit for Marshville. And we continue. And we continue until January ninth, twenty twenty five, at six thirty P M. No, no, and, um, we'll say seven o'clock P M. And continue the time for action until January thirty first, twenty twenty five. So moved.
Thank you for consideration. Appreciate the time.
I need to sign this.
Anywhere.
Yeah, anywhere. And then I'll send you, I'll send you the official.
It's gonna be replacement for a birthday this year.
It'll be great. I did both mine, uh, same time.
Wow.
So you can walk along it?
Yes. Yeah, he's been great.
So can you have any minutes to talk on that?
Thank you again.
Thank you.
I'll move to approve the minutes of October twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. Second, I would favor I. And what, you give us that anybody? I'm sure that we did, we owe. Now, I don't have any money. No money? Oops, oh, you're welcome. You can go with money. And show my son what I've been here on. I move to one of the following requisitions, nine hundred and fifty dollars to Merrill Corporation, the courtesy states, as for the plan of use, and site inspections. And seventy two dollars and fifty cents to Chesley Consulting Services for nineteen to replace assistance with finalization of project and government design review. And eight fifty five to Merrill Corporation, fifty five Common Street, stormwater, pay review.
Thanks.
All the favor, I.
We're gonna move right along to our biggest M E T A.
Oh, please.
Nothing.
No, nothing, Mr. Wakey. I tell you, I have nothing to be thankful for on this three year when we get out of football, okay? Yeah. So cool.
And then zoning for twenty twenty five, which is an order of, it'll be fine. Now we will.
Alright, so I sent you one. I sent, uh, you should have the revised drafts there. So we have the eleven six draft. Um, right now, we're kind of at a stumbling point. Um, we have learned that P O H S C is gonna issue rates. We don't know when they're going to issue rates, but we're proceeding with our timetable and previously was spelled out. We have to, in order to be our town meeting there. Um, so if we have to make changes, we have to make changes. Um, we have expressed our sentiments on finding of this to our congressional reps. And, um, kind of asked for them to see, to write a letter and get this thing implementation away. I mean, it's not just our town, it's a bunch of town, it's everybody in Ottawa who's was, was spreading out meetings that this, you know, of index. Um, so.
What's the feedback?
Um, they are working on it, but right now.
So they are working on it.
No, they take this just. We met with them yesterday and.
We can just review, we can just say about who.
It's a lot, it's a lot.
You know what I'm gonna say, right?
Yeah.
So it's fifty five miles per hour.
I think we're, 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 we're ripe for having the towns just say, you know.
And you're not all over now.
You're, you're not a lot.
You're not a lot.
I'm not, I don't know, but also saying, this is the time to do it.
Well, I can tell you, I did raise your specific, I, I did raise your specific points to the state ref, in the state. But we had recorded yesterday to say, we have somebody on our board, the real estate, we tell us it's almost impossible. And they were totally agree.
You were, you were what?
Agreed that, that they don't know how to implement this, and they were totally on our side. That I think, they totally understand that we were in a conundrum, and we can't get out, who wrote this law? All of the people in the state house.
Yeah.
Yeah, jail, the law, the bill is getting.
We can tell.
I mean, we expressed our, the, the vagaries of law, we expressed some of our concern about them. We, you know, we expressed, how do you go forward if you don't know what the rates say? Uh, we expressed some of the things in the bylaw, in the, in the legislation that we, that are so unclear. You know, we don't know about toothbrushes. Yeah, we don't know about, you know, people have been talking condominiums, which, and he, Patrick O'Conner said, no, that was never the intent. It was always talked about as rental. I said, but it's, it's, and then number of dwelling accessory dwellings, these are vagaries in the law.
And owner of the.
Well, that, that's not, we're not gonna change that.
That, that found out there's.
Not on Jeffy's, it fell on Elder Moser's stomach.
But so we, we expressed our, and we expressed the concern for the town situation from the view that, you know, we've been, we've been working hard, but we can't go any. We're trying to comply, but, you know, we can't go any further until we know what those rates say. You know, this will be the third, third time in the past forty years we've lost home rule, you know, with forty B M E T A and now this. Uh, you know, we expressed the issue with sewer capacity, you know, the town has been striving to increase sewer capacity so that, you know, we can develop, we can develop more situate, but now this is gonna eat into sewer capacity. We expressed that it's two houses on a lot. We expressed that, you know, we're trying, situate's trying hard to maintain town character. And this has the potential to change the town character. You know, we, we expressed all those points.
And they, I said, they, well, there was a lot of agreement with what we had to say.
They could agree of what they want to, what are they gonna be doing about it?
When they let her write a letter and actually tell you that Patrick O'Conner actually sent you care, it was your, when you brought it mixed juice. That was brought to the legislature and that was changed because of the law that you wrote. So there you go.
So, I mean, they.
So then you're listening.
They're, they're listening, and he says he's going to have a letter next week, and, you know, but I think that we're, we're on a good path right now. Um, it's just that I can't go much further. Uh, I think, you know, Chris has given me some more changes today. Uh, I talked with, um, Jim Woodrow. Um, and, you know, I said, we're putting in a definition of cooking kitchen facilities. He says.
Good.
So, you know, when we're trying, we're trying, but I, I think that we just kind of have to take a little bit of pause for a moment. Um, you know, if anybody has the issues, let's talk about them tonight.
So, um, just, let me make sure I understand what you're saying. We're gonna pause this. We're not taking this to town.
No, we are taking it to town. We have to take it. Why? Because otherwise we won't have a bylaw.
We have it at fifteen.
It will be done with more.
Why?
When, when the state law goes into effect on February second, uh, that's the law that will be entered.
So, so the, the fact that others are doing nothing means that others are gonna have to deal with what?
A very vague law.
A very vague law.
I know, we're gonna file this, and state law is gonna get reinterpreted, and we're gonna have to go all over again.
Well, we, we, yes, we may have to.
Can we just put a moratorium?
But we, we've been.
Can we, can we do that?
I don't think so.
Hold on. Oh, as long as it's not perpetual, as long as it's for divine purpose, we did that with medical marijuana, right?
I don't know that we can. I can, I can look into that for next week. I mean, I can ask town council a question. I, I think that, you know, I'm, I'm not sure we can. As of February second, right now, the, the section eight and section nine in the Civil Home Act takes, takes effect. And so if we don't, we don't have a current. We don't have a current, we don't have any type of bylaw that we've advertised and had a public hearing on, then we're, it's, it's going to go back to the building.
We have no control then.
We have no control. I would think that the planning board still wants to have some control.
Just don't know what control this is, because you're telling me you're gonna reinterpret it. You're gonna issue regulations.
They're gonna issue, they're gonna issue bags, so.
I know, we don't know what it is, that's my point.
You're right, you're right.
Right?
But town council, based on, we, we attended a seminar, several of us last week, or a week before. And it was well attended across the state, over six hundred people signed on. And, you know, everybody's in the same boat, and based on that, based on that, um, seminar, town council thinks we're in a good position.
And you split the work that we've done.
With the, with the, with your eleven six draft.
And you know, this is being proactive, as far as I'm concerned, and.
So the moratorium?
No.
If you're acting out or you're doing nothing.
So I will ask, I will ask town council if there's a possibility for a moratorium in it, which would have to go to town meeting too, and we can still, we can have a public area. Uh, and still advertise, et cetera. Um, I will ask the question, but I, I'll ask.
I would think that the town, people's situation would move that down.
I would think the people's situation would move that down too. We already have people coming in saying, well, you know, I'm gonna do an accessory dwelling. And, you know, one, like I told you last time, one of them said, well, I'm gonna wait till next year. They're permitting through conservation and health now. What about the accessory dwelling? Oh, they're gonna be by right. And I responded back, by right means site planner view. And so one of the other things we brought up yesterday was, in all this talk that you hear about accessory dwellings, you know, everybody, you know, buy right, buy right, buy right. But buy right says right in the legislation, you can have site planner view, you can control setbacks, you can control block, block and height. So, but none of that's being said in, in the public work realm. Everyone thinks that the governor says we can have this by right.
So I specifically said that to Patrick O'Conner. I said, we are the only people who have read the law. So everybody else on the, in TV went, they said they could, whatever they watched at the end, and then we have to say, well, we cut, no, that's not what was said. We have to keep going. And they told me that that part, that there's not enough information for you to put up with state house. So they got that lot of.
But you know what? We have had bylaws that we have worked on and worked on, and we've worked really hard on them. And as I said, we're being proactive, but also too, every bylaw we've ever done has always been tweaked down the road. Nothing in this world is perfect.
Right.
It all has, the first time around.
Well, there's nothing anybody's gonna thought this year. We could be in the exact same boat.
Tell me, tell me, Chief, I said, don't you use ours as a sample, and they can all adjust to this.
No, no, what I'm saying is, a town meeting could get voted down. A town meeting just could get voted down.
And I, I would tell you, that's why we are working behind the scenes. We have met with a couple members of the select board, we have met with the advisory board, I was one member of the advisory board. And we told them, they, they put a new law in, you need to support the planning. We don't like it any better than you do, that it's coming in the last minute.
I get it, I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, just don't assume this is gonna get passed either, because I know how a lot of our things happen. People have ran for the woods on things that got controversial for.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Other town bodies.
Yeah.
That's why, that's why we invited me, asked them to please support this. We each have united our.
Well, I believe me that's that many times, many, so I don't take that one to the bad.
I think we have a better chance this time.
Better chance this time.
But the people.
Because a few people have gone somewhere else.
And I do believe that, um, I will be at the select board sometime in December to speak about this. Patty and I will be going and, you know, telling them where we are at this point in time and what be, what, what needs to happen. So. But if anybody has any major issues with what's written there, now is the time to say something.
We have a much better relationship with the existing board selection. In the chair, in the vice chair, who are very in tune to what we're gonna be doing. They, they're on top of this, so they understand it's not like a part of language that they, they get, and they totally get why they have to support this. So, and we just keep writing, that's all. And talk up to the lawyers.
You know, I think if it's presented, keep it simple, stupid.
Yeah.
Alright, it was presented, and as a plus as opposed to an negative. I think we can get people to buy into it, but I would like to see more, how many public hearings have we had on this, just one?
Well, we're, the first, the public hearing will be January ninth. We're doing the zoning workshop December twelve. January ninth will be always a lot for continuance.
Because I think the more people we can get involved, stakeholders, the better off we're going to be. So that it's not, oh my God, what are you doing? And the unfortunate part of all of this is that we no longer have local papers. So there's no way to get this out, this information out. I don't know about the page of ledger. And this social media is not necessarily our friend. I'm not sure the best avenue to get this out to the public, because it is very important.
Well, we try to look at it. We try to find out every paper. They have it so. Well, working on it. Working on it.
So it really, if you have an issue with something that's written here, let me know. And I, I'll take a look at it, and we will try to get it, you know, the best way that we can for now. And hopefully, the rates don't come out on, you know, January thirty first.
Hopefully they will.
And, you know, we'll take it in our mouth, okay?
So, yeah, Karen, one thing, I think you, you are gonna need like certain fire problems. Thought, because we define accessory dwelling for different ways. We use the term accessory dwelling everywhere.
We also.
Not accessory dwelling within or all that, we use the term.
We also have an accessory dwelling definition already in the bylaw.
Does it include these?
Your definition right now.
I guess what I'm saying is, where we use the term accessory dwellings, we need to know that it applies all of these definitions, but only within how they're defined. So if you go to, I'm just looking at, right, like applicability says accessory dwellings. Doesn't say different kinds of accessory dwellings. He says accessory dwelling.
Do we add the different kinds of accessory dwellings after that?
No, what I would propose you do is, as part of the definitions, you have a header that says accessory dwellings as used in the bylaw. The term accessory dwelling or accessory dwellings, you can mean any or all of the following, right? And then have the four definitions.
Kind of put these as a subset under the accessory dwelling.
Yeah, I'm just saying that the term accessory dwellings is the big term, right? And that there's subsets of it. So I think you just need to coordinate this right up.
Okay.
To, to figure out how to do that. I mean, that's how I would do it, but.
I mean, we do have a definition.
That's just kinda, that's kinda even the editing, definitely.
Well, I think what it'll do is, if you start doing that, it's gonna start creating. Well, I think what I'll do is, if you start doing that, it's gonna start creating confusion. Well, what kind of accessory dwelling are you talking about here, right? So.
Alright, I will, I will work on that.
If I was to say, well, that might help to process.
No, not even, no, maybe I could.
Maybe you could, maybe.
But I'm not sure I want to.
Someone just gotta keep working on that. You have an order, right?
Do you want to play a song?
Yeah, depending, we, everybody.
I'll sing, I'll sing.
Just wanted to, I'm, sorry, I'm still looking at accessory, I'll, I'll send you some.
Send me some comments, I would.
But just the, the two definitions of accessory dwelling, you have attached, accessory dwelling within. Aren't they effectively the same thing?
So attached would be, uh, in an addition, if you want.
But by the time it's done, it's within.
Within, then, yeah, but within would be like a finished basement, a finished attic, or even if you altered, you know, maybe this, you got into some discussion about alterations. If you change the arrangement of someone who lives in your house, they, without changing any of the perimeter, that would be an accessory dwelling within the house.
So stay within the foot.
Yeah, everything within the foot.
Yeah, I mean, so, so we're assuming that something is gonna build attached accessory dwelling. We'll permit that first as opposed to just permit it, the extension into the house.
That's usually, that makes sense, so I.
Right, we usually see a way around.
I think so, on my first half, they added an addition. Yeah, right, going down there, there was a couple of those, we had a couple on first half, I believe, they made the nice.
What? I'm not, I'm not speaking about it, I'm just trying to.
But I mean, not, those are, those are attached.
I see where you differentiate these definitions.
I see where you're going, so, so they're gonna get a permit for, uh, an addition this year, next year they're gonna be permitted for accessory dwelling.
You can get that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think.
I mean, maybe, I'm just thinking those are both sort of the same.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think that's gonna make a huge difference, there's no difference on how they, or they're gonna. I think just, you know, as a definition.
Trying to remove two billion things.
Hope, hopefully they came in and say, we wanna do an accessory dwelling, but then, here's our permit application for that, you know, and things like that.
But then there's the question, um.
Did we just call it accessory dwelling, you didn't know attached or within?
Well, I found this, I'm quite curious if it's attached, right?
Attached, attached is very.
Is, cause you're adding to your house.
Well, they're touching the seven.
That gets in the settlement.
Yeah.
But if you have a breezeway between the house and the accessory apartment, that would be a little bit different.
Say that again.
Say that again.
You have a breezeway.
A farmer's porch or something and then.
And these are what people do.
Well, then it's not.
If you could walk outside.
But you got to go there, yes.
I mean, you're a little brutal, right?
But the root is still in that.
You're just a bad.
Oh, yeah, that's a whole.
But it's not a flaw. I'm sorry, I withdraw, I'm like.
It's not even, okay.
This is, this is the whole zoning issue, like additions and extensions.
No, so I would move on.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would say if it's currently connected by anything.
Yeah, it's.
That's hell.
Yeah. Anything.
But zoning doesn't really bring that, so you have to.
That's right, that's why the whole definition of bad edition.
Yeah. It do you truly get something, but.
I did, I believe it's on. But can I ask one more question on accessory dwelling? How important do you think it is for town council to be here at the workshop or the public hearing?
I think it's enormous, we.
I think it's gonna be very.
Ask.
Okay, then I will ask, and that's why I'm asking. I lay this on, I, I went to C P C last Monday. And the dish pan, which is over on Black Road, used to be upon. And that has been withdrawn for the moment. The next one was a late application for the Bates House. Are you all familiar with Bates House?
Was Jerry at the door?
Yeah, at the door. I remember that, that's his house. So apparently, over the years, they've been bits and pieces that have been taken apart, things have been cut and done, da 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 da. It assessed nine hundred and seven thousand dollars and they think it might cost nine hundred thousand dollars, except.
Does anybody live in there?
Yes, they have a tenant. And so.
It belongs to.
The town situit. So they're coming forward. It's gonna be a, a process. You're gonna come up with, this is April town meeting, monies, two hundred thousand dollars from C P C, hire, um, an architect to go through antique, it's an old, old sixteen fifty house. And it's, it's not flawless. So there's that, most of that's gonna go. And then, who's asking for that? Nancy Pope put together the application. Town is asking for it.
So historical society, historical commission?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm just asking because there's a preservation plan being worked on right now.
Well, I know that she said, Nancy Pope said, she was going, she was applying for, uh, grant, I don't know if it's a preservation grant or what it is, for the capital plan over above this two hundred thousand.
It's, I just know that this guy is gonna contact me in the next few weeks to talk about what they're gonna recommend for the preservation. And so.
Chris, what's the cutoff for capital, what's the number?
Fifty thousand, twenty, fifty thousand? What is it?
Twenty five.
Twenty five. So it's, uh, very interesting and then the basketball court, uh, board renovation is going forward. They are going to take the third basketball court, line their own for pickleball. But they're going to have nets that can be taken off, put that one again. So this is two keys, a big, big open ground.
Where is this?
This is at the high school.
That's the also.
You can finish the high school too.
They can't put something down after, from the, and that's.
Your code, the coding?
Yeah, yeah.
Solid gold.
Yeah.
They've got some temporarys, um, striping down.
For them.
And then they'll do, they'll be able to finish it.
Court coding.
Yeah. In the, um, in the spring and time for the tennis season.
Yeah. So, that's all I know I don't know from this.
I'm going to conservation and they're trying to conserve everything, that's all I'm concerned, it says. Lots of projects in conservation. Lots of bad people doing bad things that they've been caught into the buffer and, yeah, to tell you, my world, we neighbors, it's gonna turn you in, that's what happens. So the three people, them, we are neighbors, they cut down the buffer, we can't do that, so. That's it, anybody else, wait, it's on now. I didn't get to go to advisory because I think it's too much. So. That's it. Karen? So the de-watering plan for the, uh, for the water treatment plant, if it was reviewed and approved, they, I ended up on base to building permit. I believe that they were going to, they're doing exhumation now. They have to notify us when they're gonna start de-watering. And I didn't communicate to the work help. Told us we got the revised bond for, um, for that. We're gonna get, um, we're gonna do a small, another small cell any day now. And so next week, we'll be the twenty first at the E L C, Monday night is town meeting.
Yep.
Yeah.
Be there or be square.
And December fifth and December twelfth are our meetings. They're both here in this room. So we're, we're, we're getting we're getting a lot of projects filed. I mean, and I have people that, I'll tell you.
They started pumping water.
So sorry.
No, they have eighteen this time here.
Ninety nine.
Six, seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. He's only got a colossal launch, it's gonna hopefully, hopefully. Husky thing.
You override.
Yes, like you said, it'd be too commercial, Husky will stop them.
So on the twenty first, I'm sorry. Twenty first.
No, fifty, fifty twelve, fifty and twelve.
I'm like the most, I'm Karen.
Second, all in favor?
I.